Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our closed session. City Attorney Logue will make a closed session announcement and then the City Council welcomes public comment on the items listed for closed session.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. There are three items on this evening's closed session agenda. Item 2.1 is a conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.9. The name of the claimant is Ella Kobzanitz. Item 2.2 is a conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.9. The name of the claimant is Elizabeth Ruff. Item 2.3 is a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.8. The property is One Amphitheater Parkway, Lot C. The agency negotiators are Angela La Monica, Real Property Program Administrator and Public Works Director, Don Cameron. The negotiating party is Google LLC. Under negotiation are price and terms of lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any member of the public joining us virtually or in person like to provide comment on the closed session items listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk. We'll take in-person speakers first. And I see no in-person speakers, so we'll now take virtual speakers. Raise your hand if you want to speak. I see no virtual speakers, so we will go into closed session. Thank you.[115.64]
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the city clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abigail Koga?
Here.
Councilmember Kamai?
Here.
Councilmember Maticek?
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Ramos?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sholter?
Here.
Mayor Hicks?
Here.
David Cor.
We're now on item number three on our agenda: Presentations. Please note, these are presentations only. The city council will not take any action. Public comment will occur after presentation items. If you'd like to speak on these items in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. So first, we're going to have, we're going to recognize Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with a proclamation, and we're happy to be joined this evening by Nancy G. to accept this proclamation. And so Nancy, will you please join me at the lectern? So, thank you Nancy, it's good to see you. I'm going to read a little bit of the proclamation, but not the entire thing, because they get fairly bureaucratic. And more, I want to talk about your, your family and your father's contribution to the city. But to give a little background with, on what the proclamation says, it says, "Whereas the month of May was chosen, chosen as Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month to commemorate two important historic milestones: one, the arrival of the first Japanese immigrants in the US on May 7, 1843, and the contributions of Chinese workers to the building of the Transcontinental Railroad, completed May 10, 1869," neither of which your father was involved with. "And whereas the city of Mountain View and the entire nation are enriched by the diverse cultural contributions made by residents from the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands, and whereas Asian-American and Pacific Islanders have had a profound impact on the nation and the Mountain View community, which is home to a number of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders who serve as excellent representatives of both the Mountain View Asian-American and Pacific Islander community and the Mountain View community at large, including members of the city council." Now Nancy, I wanted to present this to you in particular because I'm a lifelong member of our Historic Association, and I've read history books of Mountain View, like milestones, and there's some stories that they leave out. And one of the stories, I think, was your father's and your family's contribution to our downtown and to Mountain View's economy as a whole, at a time when we were frankly struggling economically and the city was, was in the red. So with that context, can you, you can come around and face the audience and say a little bit, oh, you're prepared, okay, great. Say a little bit about the contributions of your father and your family.
All right, thank you Mayor Hicks, and thank you city council members. I appreciate the, being able to accept us on behalf of the Chinese-Americans and the Asian-Americans in the Mountain View community. As far as my family was concerned, we actually came to Mountain View in the early, or no, excuse me, late 60s. And back then, it was around the time when, I believe, Mayfield Mall, if, for those of you that have been around long enough, Mayfield Mall had just opened, and that was kind of the in thing for businesses. So all of the downtown stores moved over to Mayfield Mall. And so Castro Street was pretty vacant at the time that we arrived. There was a couple of Chinese restaurants, if you remember them. One was Quiheng Mo, and there was one that's called Andy's. And that was basically it, as far as Chinese restaurants. And like I said, a lot of vacancies. And when we first came, it was actually, my mother was a California girl, but was from San Francisco. But my dad did not like living in San Francisco because it was too foggy and too cold. So he came down here and he saw that there was an opportunity. We actually were told by some other people that says, maybe you shouldn't go down outside of San Francisco because there's hardly no Asians and hardly no Chinese there. You're going to be discriminated against and, you know, not treated right. But luckily, my dad didn't listen to them, and he was actually of the, the one that, you know, took that as an opportunity and as a chance to do something different. So, so we, he was in the real estate business, and with all the vacancies, he went around and asked the other property owners if they wanted to rent their place. And of course, they said, oh yeah, we'll rent. And what he did was, he advertised in the Chinese newspapers. And so he put in ads that there's vacancies in Mountain View, and, you know, there's opportunities for opening any type of business that you want. And he actually got quite a few people interested because comparatively, the people that were in San Francisco, the rents were much higher, much lower here. And so they saw that as an opportunity. And so that kind of started with, you know, one Chinese restaurant coming down, and then pretty soon, another Chinese restaurant coming down. And then it actually expanded from the restaurants to the grocery store, Easy Foods that's there, you know, was, I think, one of the first grocery stores in Mountain View that had the Chinese goods outside of San Francisco. And then, and then there was another grocery store called Wing Yun that was now where Ava's is. And then, of course, there's the Herb Store that's still there. And so, you know, one by one, the Chinese entrepreneurs came down, and, and the restaurant business grew. And then, of course, as the restaurant owners, over time, decided to sell their restaurants, then it diversified from just Chinese to Italian, whatever, and Indian. And as it is now, it's, it's all diversified. But it, you know, I like to think that maybe my dad might have been responsible for sort of making Mountain View and Castro Street what it is to now, right now. And in fact, my dad served on the, a number of boards. The Downtown Committee, the Revitalization Committee, he was chair for a number of years. There was also the Chamber of Commerce, and he was also the first, I think, Chinese-American president of the Mountain View Board of Realtors, which now no longer exists. The Border Realtors kind of consolidated, and now it's Silicon Valley Board of Realtors. But each city used to have one at one time. So anyways, that's kind of a brief synopsis of what I, the community that I remember as we grew up, and I hope it continues in it, and I know it will continue. And on behalf of the Chinese-Americans and my family, I want to thank you for this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you Nancy. I know you have a busy evening tonight with multiple events. So thank you for coming in and telling your story. I think that it's, I think, when I read Mountain View history, that's one of the missing chapters of the revival of the downtown and exactly how that happened when we were in hard times. So thank you again for showing up and telling your story. Okay, next, we have our 3.2 on our agenda, which is our Affordable Housing Month proclamation. We're happy to be joined this evening by representatives from the Mountain View Tenants Coalition, the Community Action Team, Project Sentinel, Community Legal Services of East Palo Alto, Nova Works, the Santa Clara County Office of Supportive Housing, the Community Health Awareness Council, and Olga Mello and Paula Perez on behalf of the Solid, oh, and Suscenda Castan, I think I mangled your name, on behalf of the Solidarity Fund to accept this proclamation. Will you please join me at the lectern? Sure, everybody come on up. Okay, so this, this one is a very long proclamation, and I really don't know. I did read all of the last one. But this one says, "Whereas each year May is designated as Affordable Housing Month, and whereas the theme for 2023 is building community, and whereas housing is a basic human right, and yet, each year thousands of Silicon Valley families and individuals struggle to find a home they can afford in one of the most expensive housing markets in the nation. And whereas our communities thrive when they're inclusive and everyone has a safe, stable, and affordable place to call home. And whereas Mountain View is committed to putting the ongoing need for new affordable housing development, preservation of existing affordable homes, and protection of its most vulnerable residents as top priorities, as demonstrated in the council's strategic priorities, as well as the city's housing element, Consolidated Plan, and Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. And whereas the city has a race, equity, and inclusion initiative which includes efforts to reduce barriers and increase access to housing, engage with the community, and facilitate community participation in the development of city housing policies. And whereas the Solidarity Fund was formed in 2020 as a grassroots organization to connect families who have not been able to access funds or programs from safety net providers, community-based organizations, or state and federal programs, such as undocumented residents, those with limited English proficiency, and extremely low-income residents with flexible cash assistance for an array of needs, including paying rent, utility, and medical bills, and buying food with funding allocated by the city council from the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, funds, and support from the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation. And whereas members of the Solidarity Fund support and are part of other community groups, including the Mountain View Tenants Coalition and the Community Action Team, who actively engage with the city on developing affordable housing policies, including through the housing element process, and who work with members of the multicultural community and those with limited English proficiency, to connect them with housing resources and the city's participatory process." Okay, it goes on more, but I'm not going to read every word. So in the end, now therefore I, Allison Hicks, mayor, on behalf of the city of Mountain View, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Affordable Housing Month. And now, I want to, if I can find you all, I want to present this to the three of you so that you can come up and, and say some words.
Muy buenas tardes, Mayor Allison Hicks.
Muy buenas tardes, Mayor Allison Hicks, Vice Mayor Pat Scholwalt, and the members of the Consilio. Como líderes de nuestra comunidad, agradecemos a la ciudad de Mountain View por reconocer al Fondo de Solidaridad de Mountain View, así como al equipo de comunidad en acción. Para mí es difícil separar los dos grupos porque para mí los dos son muy importantes. Porque como Community Action Team nacimos como líderes y el Fondo de Solidaridad ha sido una consolidación para nosotros como líderes.
Thank you. To translate, she'd like to thank, first of all, Mayor and Vice Mayor. And say, she is Olga Mello and she's here both as part of CAT and the Solidarity Fund. And those are two very important things to her because she is part of both of those. That's my video. The Community Action Team is where they were all born from. And the Solidarity Fund is what's also come out of that. And that's what they've been able to give back.
Agradecemos a la ciudad de Mountain View por reconocernos, por el trabajo que hemos estado haciendo para mejorar la seguridad de la vivienda a largo plazo.
We thank the City of Mountain View for all the work they've been doing to help all of us in the long term.
Para nuestra comunidad latina de clase trabajadora de Mountain View, de manera personal agradezco esta distinción y realmente apreciamos a este Consilio por su gran trabajo que están haciendo de conectarse con la comunidad, escuchando opiniones y tomando acción a lo que la voz de nuestra comunidad dice.
And again, I want to thank you all for helping us as a Latin working community. And it's something that's very personal to me. And I want to thank you all for listening to all our comments and for taking action on everything that we say.
Y esperamos seguir en el compromiso de trabajar juntos comunidad y ustedes como Consilio para lograr que ya no más familias sean desplazadas. Queremos estar en esa fotografía dentro de unos años viviendo todavía en Mountain View porque todos estamos en un riesgo. Muchas gracias.
And we hope to continue working with you, us as community and you as our council. And we hope that we are all able to be in that picture not only today, but in many years to come, working together.
Respectable Alcalde Allison Hicks y respetables miembros del Consejo. Apreciamos y estamos agradecidos por el gran, por el gran trabajo que ustedes están realizando sobre vivienda asequible y por la asociación del personal de la ciudad y el Consejo Municipal y otros socios de la comunidad mientras trabajamos para llevar a cabo el modelo de fideicomisos de tierras aquí en Mountain View. Ya que somos, ya que sabemos que fideicomisos de tierras comunitarias es una buena solución para responder y prevenir el desplazamiento de los inquilinos de Mountain View. Una vez más, gracias por escuchar las necesidades de la comunidad y por el compromiso de seguir trabajando en equipo para encontrar soluciones que satisfagan las necesidades de vivienda asequible, segura, a largo plazo. Para conservar la diversidad de inquilinos de esta hermosa ciudad. Muchísimas gracias por su atención.
Respectable Mayor Allison Hicks and respectable council members. We appreciate and are grateful for the great work that you are doing regarding affordable housing and for the partnership of the city staff, city council, and the other community partners as we work to bring the land trust model to life here in Mountain View. Since we know that community land trust is a good solution to respond and prevent the displacement of Mountain View tenants, once again, thank you very much for listening to the needs of the community and working as a team to find solutions that meet the needs for safe, long-term, affordable housing to preserve the diversity of renters in this beautiful city. Thank you very much for your attention.
Susanna, did you have some words?
Ah, no.
No? Okay, you're just here. Okay.
I just want to thank you also. Echo the words of my colleagues and partners in crime because we did it and we will continue doing it. So the words in the proclamation really was very well chose. So explain a lot why we are here and why we continue. And in this struggle, everybody has been very great contributor to this success, or at least the way that we are now. But to my mind, came in this moment, many people who is not here, who is not able to be here with us. It's no few people, really remarkable absence in this group. And one of them, everybody knows him and miss him tremendously. And all of you know him. And I, maybe when I say these words, you will know who I'm talking about. We have the moral responsibility. Do you remember Hob Lopez? Well, he is with us and he will be with us. And his spirit will give us energy to continue this struggle and success. Thank you so much for your recognition. We'll take it from all the tenants in Mountain View as a Mountain View Tenants Coalition member, founder. So we really appreciate your thought most. Thank you very much.
Next. That's it? No, that's not it. So now, thank you so much. So now we have an opportunity for council comments and after that, public comments. So anybody else who has something they, they want to say, both from the audience here and also virtually? So are there any council comments on either of these presentations? Well, you've left them speechless.
Yes.
Yes. And, and so now are there, is there anyone in the room who wants to make an additional comment? You would have up to one minute. Okay. We'll give you a moment. And I'll also ask, while you're thinking about it, other people, other shy people can think about it too. And then I will look and see whether there's anybody, there are people here on Zoom as well. So I'll look and see whether anyone on Zoom wants to speak. I actually don't see anyone on Zoom, so if you, do you have a word to say?
Yeah.
Can someone adjust the microphone?
I want to say that thank you for everything you have done for us. It's because we have nothing that we could do and we have to help the community.
I just want to resonate and thank you for the recognition. And we hope to continue to work together in the community to help the Mountain View community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think that's going to be hard to top. But if there's anyone else who wants to say a word or two, this is the last called. Is there someone else who wants to say a word or two? No. Okay, so then we will close public comment on this item. Thank you all for coming. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you, if you'd like to. So we're now moving to item four on our agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. If you'd like to speak on this item or the next item, which is Oral Communications on Non-Agenda Items in Person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? I see the Vice Mayor.
Yes, I would like to pull 4.5 just for comment. I, I really want, this is, this is the item to rescind, the Stage Two Water Shortage Emergency Condition. We have been suffering for a number of years under drought conditions. Some people think that we really are in, except for this last year, you know, a 12-year mega drought. So that has meant that all of us have had to step up to the plate as personal water users and managers of our own water to do what we could to reduce our usage so that there would be enough for us all to share. And indeed, the, the members of our community heard that call and did that. And I just really think it's important that we, you know, that, to thank you all, to thank everybody, all of us together really, for doing that. But now we have had this kind of gangbuster water year. We've had almost, I think, about 150% of our average annual rainfall, depending on how you measure it. Some people think it's almost 200%. And so this year, we're in, in good, you know, in good stead. And we don't want to, we don't want, even though we live in a water, a sort of a water scarce environment, we have, you know, we have six dry months and six wet months all the time that we have to work around. We don't want people to be taken advantage of and feel like they're asked to do things when we're not having a drought that they shouldn't be. So that's why when we rescind this water shortage, we're not saying, you know, we have all the water in the world, let your faucets run nonstop, not that. It's just that we're not in a crisis situation anymore and we can all breathe a little bit. And that's really good. But the message still is use water wisely. It's just that fortunately, what's wise to do this year is much better than what was wise to you last year. So that's just what I wanted to say. And particularly, we should, we should thank the Public Works Department and the Water Department for, for doing all the things that they need to do, needed to do to make sure that our system worked properly. So thank you.
So it sounds like you are not pulling that item.
No.
You're just commenting. Any other council members who want to either pull or comment on an item? Seeing none. Would any men, member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment on these items? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or I hope you've submitted a blue speaker card to the city clerk. Do we have any in-person speakers? I don't see any. Any virtual speakers? I don't see any. So I will now bring the item back for council action and note that a motion to approve the Consent Calendar should also include reading the title of the ordinances attached to item 4.2 and the resolutions attached to items 4.3 through 4.7. I see Councilmember Ramos making a motion. And would you like to make the motion?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. I move the Consent Calendar, including item 4.2, adopt an ordinance of the City of Mountain View repealing Article 15 of Chapter 36, zoning of Mountain View City Code to repeal sidewalk cafes in the downtown area, amending Section 364465, development review procedures related to outdoor dining and merchandise displays, and amending other sections of Chapter 36 for consistency and minor amendments, and to be read in title only, further reading waived. And adopt an ordinance of the City of Mountain View repealing Article 3, merchant vendors in downtown area of Chapter 15 and adding a new section to Chapter 27, Streets and Sidewalks, to repeal the sidewalk cafe and merchant vendor provisions and replace them with a new outdoor patio program in the downtown area, and amending Chapter 25, Neighborhood Preservation, Chapter 26, Public Amusements, and Chapter 27, Streets and Sidewalks for Consistency, to be read in title only, further reading waived. Item 4.3, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View approving the annual engineer's report for the Downtown Parking Maintenance and Operation Assessment District, number two, and approving the levying of assessments for fiscal year 2023-24, to be read in title only, further reading waived. Item 4.4, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View approving the final map of track number 10395 in 1958 Latham Street, accepting dedications and making findings as required by the City Code, to be read in title only, further reading waived. Item 4.5, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View finding that a Stage Two Water Shortage Emergency no longer exists, rescinding the June 2022 Stage Two Water Shortage Emergency Condition and reinstating normal water supply conditions, to be read in title only, further reading waived. Item 4.6, adopt the resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View amending the city's records retention schedules and rescinding Resolution Number 18179, Resolution 17, number 17500, and Resolution Number 17804, to be read in title only, further reading waived. And finally, item 4.7, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View amending Resolution Number 18722, approving a mixed-use residential development and Resolution Number 18723 for besting tentative map for condominium purposes at 334 San Antonio Road to make corrections to the conditions of approval and other minor corrections, to be read in title only, further reading waived.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. And we have a second by Councilmember Ramirez, so we can now vote. Passes unanimously. We're now on item five, Oral Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for people wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. If you'd like to speak on this item in person or the next item, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. Would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk. We'll take in-person speakers first. And I see Alberto Lustig. And you will have three minutes.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Alberto Lustig with the Carpenter Local 405. And it's great to see new development coming to our city. It's great that we see this project coming up, but we also want to see, have a responsible general contractor. General contractor that promotes apprenticeship, local hire, and a livable wage. Earning a livable wage ensures the construction workers, as myself, can afford rent in the city, being able to support a family with all the basic needs and not living check by check. It gives the construction workers the opportunity for a higher education through their children's and promote a better future for the family and not just a dream. Also, having a general contractor pay livable wages, it prevents wage theft and tax fraud, which happens more than often. Having a responsible contractor ensures that construction workers have a health care for workers and his family and not become a burden to the system since 80% of the construction workers depend on some government assistance. Apprenticeship programs promote training and education for rich youth, minorities, and women into a four apprenticeship program. For some of us, it's the only opportunity to be successful. And getting training and developing the training centers and be able to have a shot to the American dream. This provides, this provides college credits, apprenticeship, these apprenticeship programs provide college credits into a higher education. You can earn a college degree. Local hire promotes quality of life for the construction worker by being able to spend more time with the loved ones and being part of the community. It also benefits the environment. It also benefits the environment by reducing pollution and by not pushing our local workforce away from our city. I would like to ask our elected officials, please promote a responsible contractor on all projects coming to our city. And also, let's think about this. Everywhere we go, a construction will build something. Whenever we sit down, a construction worker did it. We're in the building, the construction built it, the construction worker did it. Let's make sure we take care of our local workforce and not promote people, bringing people outside of town or outside of state. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other in-person speakers? Not seeing any, any virtual speakers. Please raise your hands. I do not see any more public speakers. So we'll now move on to item six on our agenda, which is new business. The item here is 6.1, adopt a resolution governing compensation related to CalPERS cost share for all unrepresented safety Pepper employees. And Senior Human Resources Analyst Ada Chang will present the item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ada Chang, Senior Human Resources Analyst. And with me in the audience is Sue Rush, Human Resources Director. I'm bringing forward a resolution to amend the cost share for unrepresented safety public employee pension reform act, Pepper employees. I'm returning to council regarding this item to correct the percentages presented in the resolution and council report from the April 25, 2023 meeting. CalPERS published their yearly actuary roll, which showed that the employee normal contribution for safety Pepper members is increasing from 11.25% to 12% in fiscal year 2023 to 24. In order to keep the total agreed upon contribution paid by safety Pepper employees the same, the employee's share of the employer contribution, otherwise known as a cost share, needs to be reduced by 0.75%. For this change to go into effect, for safety members that are not represented by a memorandum of understanding, the city needs to request a contract amendment process be started with CalPERS. The first step being that CalPERS requires that current resolutions pertaining to the cost share for unrepresented safety employees to reflect the appropriate amounts. The resolution presented includes the key components required by CalPERS. Once council passes the resolution, staff will submit the remaining documents to CalPERS for approval to begin the contract amendment. Pending CalPERS approval, staff anticipates bringing the contract amendment to council within the next few months.
Thank you. Is that the end of the presentation?
Yes, it is.
Yes, thank you very much then. Do any members of the council have questions? Seeing none. Would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click raise hand button in Zoom or submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk. And seeing none. I'll bring the item back for council deliberation in action. And note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the resolution attached to the report. Councilmember Kameh?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountainview to modify CalPERS cost share contributions for an all unrepresented to safety public employees pension reform act employees to be read in title only, further reading waived.
And I see a second by Councilmember Ramirez, so we can vote. Passes unanimously. We will now move on to item 6.2, which is North Bay Shore Precise Plan Bonus Office Floor Area Ratio Authorization. Would any council members like to make disclosures? Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I will disclose that I had an opportunity to speak with the applicant.
Councilmember Matichak?
Thank you. I also have spoken with the applicant several times. Thank you.
Councilmember Abaykoga?
Thank you, Mayor. I too have spoken with the applicant.
Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mayor. I've also spoken to the applicant or the representative, I guess.
Councilmember Kameh?
I'll disclose I met with the applicant's representative.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I met with the applicant's representative a couple times about this. Thank you.
And I also met with the applicant and, and his representative. So Senior Planner Ellen Yao will now present the item.
Hello, good evening, council. My name is Ellen Yao, Senior Planner. And before you tonight is the North Bay Shore Precise Plan Bonus FAR Ratio Request. I'm going to go over the North Bay Shore Precise Plan history to start off the presentation. The city identified North Bay Shore as a change area in the city's 2030 general plan, and then adopted the North Bay Shore Precise Plan in 2014 to establish those policies and standards for the transformation of the area consistent with that general plan. The precise plan also included an overall cap on office development, and the bonus floor area ratio program was created and designed as a competitive process, which allows project proponents to request that additional office square footage in exchange for providing more community benefits. In May 2015, the city council considered 10 bonus office FAR applications, and they allocated 2.2 million square feet of bonus FAR to four office projects and one hotel. Since then, three of the projects are completed or under construction. The other two office projects did not obtain entitlements, and therefore their authorizations have expired, and the previously allocated floor area was returned to the available pool. Then in 2017, the city council adopted a comprehensive update to that precise plan, which allowed up to 9,850 residential units and 2.227 million unapproved net new square feet. So at that time, the bonus residential FAR review guidelines were also revised, and it added the provision of new residential uses as a criterion when evaluating bonus FAR applications. On March 23, 2021, the city council authorized a bonus FAR requalification request for approximately 1.3 million square feet of net new office floor area. This is included in Google's North Bay Shore Master Plan. And on December 7, 2021, the city council adopted revisions to the bonus FAR review guidelines, which included new criteria and thresholds. Council also directed staff to initiate another process to solicit applications for the remaining 250,000 square feet of office floor area. So the city issued a request for proposal last year in October, and we accepted applications until January of this year. So the city was contacted by only one applicant, the Jeffrey A. Morris Group, Inc., who was interested in applying for the bonus office FAR. And they are the, who submitted the only application. The project is located at 1808 North Shoreline Boulevard. The applicant proposes a six-story office building that is comprised of 108,856 square feet of office, 4,000 square feet of ground floor retail that fronts North Shoreline, three levels of above-ground parking, and outdoor rooftop terraces proposed in the top three levels. The site is currently built with about 22,000 square feet office building, and they're proposing net new office floor area of about 87,000 square feet. This is an increase of 1.0 FAR floor area ratio. The project also proposes public benefits, which I will discuss in the following slides. This is the proposed project site. It is located between Charleston Road and Plymouth Street on the west side of North Shoreline. It is shown red on the map. The property is located within the Joaquin Complete Neighborhood area and the core character area of the precise plan. The site is currently surrounded by office and research and development uses, and it is surrounded on all sides by the proposed Google North Bay Shore Master Plan, as seen on the image here. So I'll go over the bonus FAR tiers. The precise plan allows a base FAR of up to 0.45. Applicants can request FAR up to 1.5 FAR in the core character area. Requests for the bonus FAR must meet requirements based on each tier of additional FAR requested. Tier one requires both a lead platinum building and public benefit or district improvement project, specifically focusing on transportation. The tier two and tier threes require providing higher performance green building, zero net new green building, or public benefit or district improvement projects. Shown in the second column here, you can see the project requests up to the 1.25 FAR, meaning the tier three. And so they're proposing a lead platinum building with a public benefit funding contribution of $1.9 million towards transportation and affordable housing to qualify for the tier shown on the slide. Unlike other precise plans that have established community benefit contribution values per square feet requested, North Bay Shore does not have a minimum dollar amount. Instead, projects are reviewed on a case-by-case basis and in comparison to other projects that have applied. So the applicant is proposing a public benefit value of $27.27 per square foot. This is similar to the East Wisman Precise Plan, which has a requirement of $27.25 per square foot. The bonus FAR reviewed guidelines, which is shown in Appendix F of the precise plan, states that proposals must meet the following three thresholds to be considered for a bonus FAR allocation. So the first, the project is located in the Joaquin Complete Neighborhood area and meets this first requirement. And then the other two, I will discuss in the following slides. First, this qualifying threshold has two parts. It's underlined on the screen for you to see. First is providing units onsite or offsite and/or through partnerships. And the second part is achieving the housing targets in the precise plan. In reviewing part one, the project provides funding for affordable housing instead of providing constructed units. The provision of the funding may not be a direct partnership, however, it does facilitate a city partnership with affordable housing developers to be used on dedicated sites, expected, you know, in the area or land purchased by affordable housing developers. This meets the spirit and intent of the guidelines, as the funding does facilitate the city to partner with affordable housing developers. However, for the second part of this threshold, there's no clear quantitative metric that is outlined in the guidelines. So it doesn't define how our project actually achieves the housing targets. So unlike, again, unlike East Wisman Precise Plan, which requires three units per 1,000 square feet of office requested. So therefore, the project shown in the green column is being compared to the precise plan targets shown in blue, and the extent to how the proposal helps to achieve the plan-wide targets. So the second column here shows the current status of units and employment based on approved or submitted projects, such as the Google North Bay Shore Master Plan, SiWest Proposal, Sabrato, and Eatinghausen Project. In the third column, you'll see the balance that has yet to be met with those projects. This includes 268 units needing land and 1,162 where land has been dedicated, but construction funds are needed. And then you can see in the last column, the project is requesting about 3.9% of the employment targets, and is proposing to provide the city with funding to facilitate 2.9% of the affordable housing target. This slide shows their proposal. So by using an estimated city subsidy of about, of $125,000 per unit, the proposed amount of funding would result in approximately 57.6 units, which is the 2.9% I mentioned before, of the precise plan target of 1,970 affordable units. And the project is requesting 3.9% of the net new square feet of office. So therefore, council in its discretion may make the determination whether or not the proposal meets that second part of the threshold of achieving the targets in the precise plan. Since there is a range of possible interpretations of the language of this qualifying threshold, staff is recommending updates to the language of the FAR guidelines to add clarity to the process, which will be covered later in the presentation. And then the third threshold, in addition to receiving bonus office FAR, the projects must demonstrate substantial compliance with the 14 guiding principles that are identified in the precise plan to support the plan's vision and the development standards in the precise plan. Of these 14, 13 are relevant to the project's site and scope. Overall, the project is generally in compliance with these principles. However, compliance with one principle, the first one, create complete neighborhoods, is based on staff's conclusion in the previous section that I showed you earlier before, by providing funding to the city and is helping to meet the complete neighborhood targets. Some additional information, the project's adherence to the precise plan standard isn't required at this stage, but the review will be conducted after the application is authorized. In December 2021, the city council approved the 2021 circulation study and directed staff to amend the precise plan with the study's recommendation, which included a 35% to 40% single occupancy vehicle rate to maintain compliance with the gateway trip cap. So if the project is authorized, the trip reduction standards based on those amendments to the precise plan pursuant to the 2021 circulation study will be applied and enforced through a condition of approval for this project. In addition, the applicant will be required to escalate the proposed funding based on inflation. It will be increased by the Construction Cost Index, CCI, each year until the payment is made. Additionally, housing impact fees counted in the project's housing funding will be based on the rates applicable on the date they are paid. And this is a slide where I go over the clarity and changes in the north, the bonus FAR review guidelines. So based on this experience that we've taken this project through the bonus FAR application process, there is a range of possible interpretations of the guideline language, and staff recommends updating the bonus FAR review guidelines. Specifically, the North Bay Shore guidelines could be updated to provide more clarity to applicants and staff, similar to language in the East Wisman Precise Plan, which requires a direct quantitative jobs and housing linkage. Other language can be added to provide more clarity regarding flexibility within the guidelines and other procedural revisions. So if the council authorized the applicant to submit an application for the bonus office FAR, the next steps include, include the applicant submitting a complete planned community permit or master plan no later than one year from the date of authorization, with the possibility of a six-month extension if granted by the city council. Staff additionally recommends that the planned community permit be submitted within one year of the master plan approval, if that's the route the applicant chooses. The applicant has also stated interest in pursuing a development agreement with this master plan to allow for a longer entitlement period. So when they do submit for the planned community permit, and when they submit for the development agreement, we will also include an assessment of the time period and the public benefits provided by the project, which will require adoption by the city council. If city council denies the authorization request, there's no further action on this project. So staff has the following three recommendations. The first is the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, doesn't apply since the city council's action is not a project as defined by SEQA. Number two, consider the request, and if authorized, staff will return with a resolution for adoption. And number three, direct staff to update the North Bay Shore Precise Plan Bonus FAR Review Guidelines to provide clarity. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yao. Now we'll have a presentation from the applicants, Jeff Morris, Principal Jeffrey A. Morris Group, and Bob Perry, Design Director from Gensler.
Mayor Hicks and members of the city council.
Mayor Hicks and members of the City Council. My name is Jeff Morris, and I own a property at 1-808 North Shoreline Boulevard. My family purchased the property in the early 1980s and built the existing one-story building. We've been working with staff over the past several years in hopes of having an opportunity to participate in the city's vision for the redevelopment of North Bay Shore. We're excited to present this proposal tonight. We are asking for authorization of 69,668 square feet of bonus FAR, not the net new number of 87,000 square feet, to allow for the development of a new six-story office building of 108,856 square feet. Our goal is to create a boutique building with exceptional design centered around worker well-being and sustainability. We work with Google's design team, and we'll make sure that our building fits contextually within their plan. The project also includes 4,000 square feet of retail active uses on the ground floor. In terms of community benefits and housing, we appreciate the flexibility council has provided for smaller property owners to meet the housing threshold. The idea of partnering with the city through the contribution of funding to support your affordable housing needs makes sense for smaller properties like myself that do not have the ability to dedicate land or build housing onsite. The city will be getting seven acres from Google and additional land from Sabrato and will need funding to subsidize these affordable projects. In total, the project will contribute $9,760,000 of community benefit funds and impact fees for housing and transportation, which will be increased by an index of the CCI. Over the past few weeks, we've been working collaboratively with the city staff over the funding package for the project. Based on these discussions, we increased our offer for fundable, the funding of affordable housing by $1 million. The project will contribute $7.2 million for affordable housing, which includes $4.7 million in community benefit funds and $2.5 million in housing impact fees. The funding will help subsidize construction of 58 new affordable housing units. The project will also contribute $2,560,000 to transportation improvements, including $200,000 in community benefits for transportation. I'm very proud of the project. The community benefits proposal is robust and in line with other bonus FAR projects on a per-square-foot basis, with more than double the community benefits of cities' other precise plans. The project's $4.9 million contribution in community benefits for housing and transportation is $70.33 per square foot of bonus FAR, which is more than double Google's community benefits of $32.99 per square foot of bonus FAR. There was suggestion in staff report that the project should be required to contribute even more for housing, up to maybe $9.6 million, based upon a methodology of using net new square footage, as opposed to my request for bonus FAR that is not in the bonus FAR guidelines, nor was it in the proposals. The value of office as currency for housing has shifted dramatically post-COVID. This is a very expensive project with lead platinum and other design requirements, and the economics are extremely tight. We feel that our proposal is strong, meets the bonus FAR guidelines, and is fair and equitable. The staff references a 20% target for affordable housing, which is probably not achievable since Google's now only committing 15%. Under the staff's methodology, in assuming a 15% affordable housing target instead of 20%, our project's 58 units would be 3.9% of the 1,478 units and therefore equal to the 3.9% of net new office square footage. If we receive an authorization tonight, we will work, we'll start work immediately on the preparation of a master plan and development agreement. As part of the development agreement, we'll also offer additional public benefits such as public art and active use assistance program, which will include the funding for the retail subsidized tenants' improvements and rent. Since 2015, the city has allocated almost all of the bonus FAR to Google and other large landowners, and only 250,000 square feet remain. We're asking for a very small amount, 69,668 square feet, or just 1.99% of the original 3.5 million square feet of bonus FAR. We support the city's vision and hope the council will allow us to be part of it. I want to introduce a team from Gensler to share our vision.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, councilors. My name is Bob Perry, architect with Gensler, here tonight representing a larger and more broad, diverse team of design professionals. So we're excited to be here tonight to share our proposal and our point of view about how we're amplifying and dreaming into the Precise Plan as well as the Google Master Plan. I think I understand I should prompt slides. Yeah. So, next slide, please. So as we started our design process, we really leaned into the guiding principles of the North Shore Precise Plan. Among many goals, we actively sought to complete the neighborhood and create walkable and active streets. Next. And so, kind of starting large picture, right, looking at how do we fit into the context? We find ourselves at 1808 as a significant site within the Google Master Plan, a great contributor to the vision. Specifically within the vision, there's some key features, right? The key corners, we find ourselves sitting between that, right? A great contributor to the Master Plan itself, along with the active edges and frontages that are planned. Throughout our process, we did in fact work with the Google design team to make sure that our outcomes were fulfilling the vision that had been set out. Next. So not only are we in between representing an opportunity of active frontage and key corners, we also find ourselves between two significant outdoor spaces and open spaces that are part of the plan. The next slide, taking a closer look, we've been very sensitive to how we're designing and fitting into the plan and particularly the public realm. We represent the opportunity to make significant connection not only along shoreline but also the western edge. So we find ourselves a critical link within the greater planning of the work done so far. On the next slide, what we do now is, with all of that in mind, our building starts to take shape. So again, we're paying great attention to the edges, not only shoreline but also the western edge, thinking of how people move, thinking about the building form. The building above Level Two sets back, that draws people outside, brings them to the edges, brings people out to engage with the street. Those setbacks also bring daylight deeper into the building, create a more sustainable workplace. And what's more, on the upper right, you can see we've set back to create more terraces on the Joaquin Grove side, further activating that space with the tenant activity. Next, please. So taking a closer look at the ground floor, thinking about the specific plan, goals of active frontage, we find ourselves proposing active uses on the ground floor along shoreline, creating a landscape that's active with use and spaces for people to linger and take respite. The western edge is a very intentional connection from Joaquin Grove down to the portal. And again, along Joaquin Grove, on the upper right, you can start to see how the building represents and has a relationship to that open space and the public realm. Next, please. And the Master Plan has evolved a little bit through our process, but we're flexible. So in particular, this is a zoom in, looking at the southwest corner of our site, we've expanded our landscape, we've expanded the opportunity for the public to engage as the portal has evolved. So all of this is wrapped up into kind of a warm modernism architecture, right? We're intentionally moving away from an all-glass, cold office building. This is rich in material, it's rich in texture. That texture provides sun shading and glare reduction for the workplace. So everything is working together to create a holistic design solution. On the next slide, we start to zoom in a little bit, and we start to appreciate how our building defines the edges. It starts to contribute and fulfill all of the landscape and open space requirements. On the next slide, we sort of continue to come down, now we're at eye level, and start to appreciate how the architecture defines the street wall. You can start to see how, in this corner, the building sweeps away, people are able to come out and activate the frontage. There's public art, there's well-defined walkways, cycling routes, there's different spaces of scale for people to engage. The ground floor retail is highly transparent, it's very inviting, it's warm, it's cafes, it's cultural, it's community opportunities. It also bends around the corner to engage the open space. Next slide, please. And all of this, again, is wrapped up in sustainable concepts, both big and large, small and large, as well as indoor and outdoor. So all of this is bundled together as a highly sustainable design proposal. The workplace features are not only there to attract a world-class tenant, but these building features, following the Google Master Plan guidelines, these building features help to engage and make a connection to the adjacent spaces, primarily the public realm. We're considering doing this out of mass timber. Again, we're moving toward a highly sustainable design solution, a world-class building that attracts a world-class tenant. So we're thrilled to be here tonight to show our design proposal. We believe all of this is wrapped up in a sustainable design solution that amplifies the specific plan goals and look forward to hearing your feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Do any members of the council have questions? I'm not seeing a lot of questions yet. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. So the first is, staff shared that the typical subsidy provided for affordable housing by the city is around $125,000 a unit. I asked this question in the briefing, so it shouldn't be too much of a surprise, but does that apply also to subsidies provided for affordable housing on land owned by the city?
Yeah, I'll defer to that to the Assistant City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director, Arti Srivastava. As we discussed at our meeting, the city's typical subsidy has been $125,000, and that has not been on dedicated sites. But at that time, we had the, we had the advantage of having Measure A funding that almost replicated city funding. In cases where, previous to Measure A funding, the city has provided over $250,000 a unit when sites have not been included. So our estimate was, we don't have an alternative to Measure A, we have dedicated sites, so we expect a city funding of approximately $125,000 until another funding source is found.
Do you know offhand what the subsidy provided for Lot 12 was?
I believe they actually provided a certain amount, about $10 million, and then there was a subsidy of a total of 10.4, I think, $8 million from Senator Becker and 2.4 from the city. So it was a wash at the time, but it also had Measure A funding.
Okay, so 125 should be, that's the expectation for the land dedication that we're anticipating. That's still what we would be providing?
That's what we're expecting. It would take the place of what Measure A funding would have provided.
Okay.
Since we don't have another funding source at this time.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Similar question about the flexibility of the community benefit contribution. It's not a housing impact fee, right? There isn't a NEXUS study, so there's some flexibility with the funds. Could a future council elect to use that funding for something other than housing?
Typically, when the council approves community benefits for a certain category, they're used in that category. I would imagine if they had to be revised, a council could revise them in the future.
They're not restricted funds?
Pardon?
They're not restricted funds?
Community benefits funds are not restricted. They're required, the bonus tiers, for example, require some combination of funding for transportation and other funds, so they're not restricted in that regard.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Responses to the questions submitted in advance to the meeting indicated that, I think there were around 10 eligible property owners who could participate in the bonus FAR program. Do we have a sense of how many of them actually are interested in participating? Have any of them ever expressed interest in any iteration of the bonus FAR program?
Not this time. I know that there was some interest a long time ago, but it's pretty clear with this round that we did not have any other interested parties.
Okay. When we, if the majority of the council directs staff to update the guidelines, could that include outreach to the property owners to see what types of guidelines might be attractive to them, to make sure that the program itself is still operational?
Yes, we certainly would want to reach out to property owners in the complete neighborhoods areas who would qualify for this bonus FAR.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I've got for now.
Councilmember Scherwalt.
Yeah, I'm a little confused by the description of the, or the money, the dollar value given for the community benefit for square foot. I thought I heard you say that it was $27.27 a square foot, and I thought I heard Mr. Morris say that it was $70.30 a square foot. That's quite a discrepancy. So can you explain how they were calculated differently, come up with different numbers like that?
Sure. The $27 per square foot is based on the bonus FAR tiers in the Precise Plan. So in their application, they have prescribed this $1.9 million to the bonus FAR tiers in the Precise Plan. That is the purpose for that $1.9 million. And so in the Precise Plan, the bonus FAR is a threshold above which that there's contributions of public benefits and other community benefits and other requirements. And so that is related to the 64,000, I think, thousand square feet of bonus FAR to get to the 1.9 million. I believe the applicant in coming up with the $70 is looking at all of the affordable housing funds, including the $3 million that they are offering in order to address the housing qualification threshold.
Okay, that's, thank you, that clears it up. So basically, what we're talking about is a difference in the denominator. You are using just the FAR square footage, the bonus FAR square footage, and they are using the total square footage?
No, it's a difference in the numerator. It's both, both is over the bonus FAR, but they are adding all of the affordable housing funds that they're providing, which is, includes both $1.9 million for bonus, to meet the bonus FAR requirements, as well as the $3 million that they are proposing to meet the housing requirement qualification threshold.
Okay, so the staff number is only using the money that's related to the bonus FAR itself?
That's right.
Thank you so much. I really needed that clarified.
So more questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Kameh?
Great, thank you. So I think if staff could clarify, council received a letter from the applicant kind of discussing, basically, I would say, like which numbers to use, is it the bonus FAR? Is it net new? And so perhaps staff could share, because one of the things that I know that's come up is that the 2.9% of the affordable housing target, while the net new office is about 3.9%, and just, I think one of the things that we are hearing is, you know, without the jobs linkage fee here, we're seeing a little bit of, I guess, discrepancy. And so if staff could maybe expand upon the letter we received, and that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Again, Eric Anderson, Advanced Planning Manager. So in the letter, they are comparing the, and feel free to give me a wave or something like that if I get anything wrong, I don't want to misrepresent, but they are comparing the affordable housing provision in terms of, to the total square footage envisioned in the complete neighborhood area, which was 5 million square. in the complete neighborhood area, which was 5 million square feet. And so, the, if you go back to the language in the qualifying guidelines, it's providing housing to meet the targets in the precise plan. And the, because that 5 million square feet includes a significant amount of already existing office, if you use that number, then we cannot meet the targets in the precise plan because the, only the net new is going to get us to meet the targets in the precise plan if it goes up consistently with the affordable housing. So, that's the distinction. That's staff's response to the letter. Although, the purpose of those complete neighborhood targets and the totals is valuable to understand how we are doing in meeting the envisioned land use mix. And so, that is important information when we're reviewing the projects, but it doesn't show how we are doing in terms of meeting the targets.
And then, I guess, a follow-up question on that. I think that part of what I've been hearing is a kind of correlation or comparison to the Google Master Plan, which we have yet to see. So, I feel for myself personally, it's a little apples to oranges because I don't know what we're going to see on June 13th. But if we were to go forward and one of the recommendations was potentially looking at a master plan with the applicant, is that something where we could have maybe a discussion on the precise plan and how the proposed master plan of the applicant would fit in their puzzle piece versus comparing master plans with which we have not seen yet? Thank you.
I was going to ask to clarify, but go ahead.
Maybe it would help if you were asking for clarification?
Yeah.
So, we have the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. We have an applicant that wants to go forward and is saying that they'd like to propose a master plan, which we have yet to see, comparing themselves to another master plan with which we have yet to see. And so, for myself, I'm trying to, as we're discussing, potentially looking at guidelines and talking about potential authorization, trying to find a way to bring maybe some proportionality to the discussion. And so, I'm looking to staff on, should authorization go forward tonight? Is that where we can have that type of discussion so that we are not drawing incomparable comparisons?
Thank you. That was very helpful, Councilmember Kameh. I think one of our responses to the questions kind of hit upon that fact. Comparing this project to the Google Master Plan is like comparing apples to oranges because this project is proposing an office building. And in order to meet the qualifying thresholds, they're providing funds to the city, not units, but just funds. The Google Master Plan is coming in, providing housing, open space, affordable housing sites, which really meets a lot of the community targets. And so, they honestly can't be compared. But we did provide just basic comparison. When you compare the net new square feet for each project with the actual amount under the community benefit to meet those bonus FAR tiers, the Google Master Plan does provide close to $37 per square foot when you compare this project at 27. And we also wanted to say that they achieve different levels of affordable housing targets and open space targets that can't be compared. They actually provide 7,000 units for 1.3 million square feet of net new office, whereas this project is providing $3 million towards that. And when you combine the impact fees, the $3 million, and the bonus FAR tiers, that's when you get the number of units this project is helping to fund. So, you have to compare, we're not actually calculating the impact fees provided by Google versus everything else when we're putting that together. So, it's a little bit different, and that's why we say apples and oranges. So, when you compare this project and how it helps to achieve targets, you saw in the staff report and the slide that the city has received enough number of applications to achieve the market rate targets. And so, the only target that remains to be met is the 20% affordable housing target. In fact, these projects were required or were meant to help us get to that 20% because the projects that provided units in open space were only required to provide 15%. And that's why we're comparing it to the 20% target. And the 15% really wouldn't apply here unless they provided units, in which case, they would be required to provide 15% affordable housing. So, that sort of tells you why we're using the 20% affordable housing target. Then deriving from that, what we're telling council is, they're asking for 3.9% of the net new square feet, the currency that was left to be able to create the complete community when the precise plan was adopted, and they meet 2.9% of the affordable housing target when you consider that the city would use funds to partner with affordable housing developers. So, because this precise plan doesn't have specific requirements, we have used this process to help the council weigh to what extent this project helps to meet the targets.
Great. Perfect. And that answered a whole myriad of other questions that I had. So, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matichak.
Thank you. So, I recognize tonight that we are only discussing or deciding on whether or not to allocate some of the remaining bonus FAR. But it would help me to know if staff has had any discussions with the applicant about the rough timing of when they would want to actually do this project, like the length of a DA, or if they have a tenant already for this building?
We haven't talked specifically about the length of the DA. Obviously, the council would be able to approve any duration of a DA, and we didn't want to kind of get out ahead of any negotiation process or council decision on that at this stage. I'm not aware of any tenants at this point in the, you know, looking that far ahead, but you may possibly ask the applicant?
Yeah. If you could respond to those two questions? I would appreciate it.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah. The first one is if you have a tenant or not?
I do not have a tenant at this time for the new project. Google's leasing the existing building. Its lease is up next year, and if we get approval, we'll start marketing the project as soon as possible.
And then, I was wondering the length of the DA you might be looking to have?
That's a good question. We want to start working on the master plan right away. I don't have an answer to that. Carrie, do you have any? I don't have an answer to that right now. We're taking it one step at a time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other councilmembers? I'll ask my questions, seeing no other councilmember questions. So, I have a couple of questions for the applicant and then some for staff. Again, as Councilmember Matichak said, I realize that we're talking about bonus FAR right now, but I do have, and that what we're seeing here is only a rendering, but I do have a couple of questions. But I actually like the architecture. And I do have a couple of questions about, you said there was cross-laminated timber on the inside. What's, I know it's a rendering, but what do you envision on the outside?
On the outside? Yeah, we've talked about a few things. Could be a terracotta material. This, again, is kind of something that brings that authentic materiality and warmth to a building facade. There's alternatives to that. Highly sustainable, ultra-high-performance concrete material that also brings a kind of robust character, allows us to really dial the color and warmth of the building as well. So, we've got a couple of options that we'd like to explore.
Thank you. And then, the second thing, you may be answering this too. I'm not sure.
Okay.
The second thing is that when I talked to the applicant's representative, she told me that there may be various kinds of tenants. It may not be a typical office tenant. It could be biotech or something else. Do you know if it were a different type of tenant than a typical office tenant, what kind of changes would you have to make in this conceptual design? Like what sort of, just the big picture kind of changes?
Do you want me to take a shot at that? Okay. I think I would venture a guess, I don't anticipate any significant changes to the building infrastructure as how it's drawn. So, you know, if, for example, if it became some sort of dry lab use, might be some loading that happens. But I don't see a big change from what's drawn today in the kind of operational side of the plans.
Okay.
But it's all speculation, to be fair.
Yes. Yeah, I know that. And that's one of the things I want to draw attention to myself and to other people, that, you know, I actually like the architecture. Everybody can have their opinion, but it may change, is what I'm thinking. Oh, or may not change. I'm seeing a shake.
I don't think it's changed too significantly. I happen to like it as well. We spent a long time working on this project. I think we're at a good position from a design point of view, and I'm pretty excited about it. So, you know, depending upon the needs of the tenant, but the look and feel is not going to change.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Would agree with that.
And then, for staff, so kind of a follow-up on Councilmember Ramirez's question about the flexibility of the community benefit funds. I just want to make sure they can also be used outside of North Bay Shore. If it were affordable housing, you know, we have a need for affordable housing in North Bay Shore, but, you know, if an opportunity arose somewhere else?
I'll let the Assistant Community.
Thank you. I remember this question coming up when we looked at the changes to the bonus FAR review guidelines. It was pretty clear that the funding would have to be allocated to units in the precise plan.
Exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you. And then, I have to say, so my major concern about this project, well, I guess I'll say it in two parts. About bonus FAR projects, any one trying to take advantage of this program is that it provide enough infrastructure. You know, every time we develop office, there's a whole set of other infrastructure that we need to accompany it. And that would be housing, which used to be, when I was in planning school, kind of optional because we didn't listen to HCD, but it's no longer optional. And then, also, schools, transportation, parks, and so forth. So, my main question, you've been answering this in different ways tonight and also when I got my briefing, but do you think that this amount provides the infrastructure that the jobs generated would demand, basically?
Well, we do, we did conduct a NEXUS study for transportation and utilities. And so, they would be providing fees to address the impact for that infrastructure. The additional $200,000 that they would provide is for transportation, could go to other similar projects in the North Bay Shore area. We don't have a, in the guidelines, we don't have a clear, you know, established kind of quantity of, for every job, we need such-and-such open space, or for every job, we need such-and-such school space. So, obviously, they aren't providing, you know, towards the schools. They are providing some kind of public network space, you know, path space that could be considered part of the open space network in the area. But we don't have any specific standards for evaluating those.
And that's why you're asking us whether you should develop guidelines for that?
Exactly. Yes. Thank you.
Let's see if I had another question. Oh, so my last question is, you know, this is not the largest office project we will have in this precise plan. So, but would it set precedent for other users of the program before we've done the guidelines that we would somehow be more married to than we might like to be?
I don't think so. What's typically been the process for council is that we only open up the process at council's request. And so, if we don't open up, if council doesn't want us to open up the process before we update the guidelines, which we wouldn't recommend, but if you don't want us to open up the process before we update the guidelines, then it wouldn't establish any precedent because the guidelines would set the new standard, the new precedence.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. And then, I guess I'll ask the applicant because they're unsure of, because we're unsure of whether this would cover all infrastructure costs. If you could do a little better, could you offer a little more than what you're now offering?
May I speak?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the way this works right now and, you know, legally, I think that council needs to consider the project as proposed, and it's kind of a thumbs up or thumbs down on the project as proposed. We would need to go back and, you know, work with staff and the city attorney's office to consider whether or not, you know, anything else could be added to this project. But tonight, I think that what's proposed and what's presented to council is the only thing that can be considered at this time.
Okay. And I also see a question from the Vice Mayor.
Yes. This is just being a little repetitive, but I really would like to understand better about what would be included in the guideline update. What are the specific things? I mean, you mentioned some things that are analogous to what's in the East Wisman Plan, but could you go over that in a little more detail, please? I think we all think that's a great idea.
Yeah. I'd be happy to kind of say a few things, but given that, you know, we haven't really started the process of diving in and like Councilmember Ramirez said, we haven't reached out to other property owners and had this conversation, I don't know how much specificity I can provide. But certainly, we are interested in providing clear quantitative metrics and thresholds. So, there's not this question around, you know, do we use bonus FAR? Do we use net new floor area? Or, you know, which target are we trying to reach or anything like that, which did cause a lot of discussion and obviously, a lot of questions by council. So, we want to make sure that that's clear from the outset to any applicant. There were also, there's also some kind of overly specific procedural language around timelines for review and the kind of master plan submittal process, which we should probably update to provide more clarity around turnaround from master plan to plan community permit. And then, further, they are guidelines, as it says in the title, but there isn't really any information in the guidelines themselves about how that discretion or flexibility should be interpreted or used, either in terms of meeting specific thresholds or alternate kind of additional criteria that may be, that the applicant may want to offer and to sweeten the pot, as it were.
Thank you. That helps. So, it seems to me that what you're saying is that you've identified a gap, but you haven't had the opportunity to that you've identified a gap, but you haven't had the opportunity to explore the details of what that gap is yet sufficiently to say, you know, this is exactly what we're going to do. You, you, it's just that you know that this process needs to be undertaken.
Exactly.
Got it. Thanks.
Councilmember Abicoga.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess along, it's along those lines regarding guidelines, going back to what the mayor was asking. Traditionally, we have not required park fees and schools, well, we can't require school fees on commercial developments. But are you suggesting or that we would explore those types of asks or requirements on future developments in this area?
That, that would be, I think, a larger discussion around the bonus FAR tiers. I think this process would be more narrowly focused around specifically the housing linkage.
Okay, yes.
And so it would be a much larger and more complex discussion to, to bring it to the, the larger range of, of infrastructure that the mayor brought up. But that's not to say that if the council is interested in, in, in some future date allocating staff time or direction to, to look at that in the bonus FAR tiers, that would be the process to do so.
Thank you, Eric. If I may add some more information, I just wanted to clarify, even non-residential projects do pay school linkage fees, albeit lower. The city cannot require anything over and above that for residential or commercial. But really, when you, when you link, for example, in the East Wisman Precise Plan, certain number of jobs to a certain number of housing, you get all the other benefits. You get the open space. You get the affordable housing. And so that's a very clear way to link. And that's probably a best practice that we have learned from and would want to apply here. And then in addition to that, the East Wisman Precise Plan actually has private open space requirements for commercial that we could apply. Not necessarily parkland, but just, you know, areas that are available to the public to use. So there are a lot of good best practices in East Wisman that we could look at bringing over, to the extent feasible.
Great. Thank you. And then going to the fact that this is a bonus FAR allocation, is just diving a little deeper in terms of timeline. I think if we were to do this this evening, we would have about 170,000 square feet left. Is the plan to wait till we hear of interest? Or are you, will you bring it back to council at some time to ask council whether or when to open it up? Or what is the next steps planned for the remaining amount?
So I, as the councilmember Ramirez suggested, we will go out and talk to other property owners. We will gauge interest through that process, and we will report back on, through that process, what we recommend the next steps to be.
And I'm trying to remember, because I know we picked this number, the 2 million, somewhat, so, somewhat square footage based on some studies, but I remember there was a range and there was the possibility, should we expend all of it to look at more if there was an interest or need? So, am I correct in recalling that? Do you remember?
The floor area, the two, so that came from several studies during the, during the general plan process, and it was updated during the 2017 Precise Plan Update process. And those studies were based both on kind of a, just a very rough, you know, 2030 build-out number, as well as some transportation analyses that happened. And so we've been further refining and updating those transportation requirements consistent with the envisioned build-out of this, the, what, what was in 2017, the 2.227 million.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kameh.
Great. Thank you. So I just had a question. In the guidelines, under the criteria, one of the bullets talks about an amount of affordable housing that exceeds the requirements listed in the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. So, since the applicant is not proposing any units, instead, we're evaluating the proposed fee that would go towards it. Correct? And so the calculation that we're given equals the, you know, 58 affordable units. And so part of the guideline discussion that we, council could potentially have is kind of how to address maybe the proportionality going forward in the, in the North Bay Shore area, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Thanks. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other council questions. So I'm going to move on to, do any members of the public joining us either virtually or in person? Would anybody like to provide comment on this item? I don't think we have any in-person speakers. But we do have, virtually, we have Peter Katz.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Hicks, and esteemed members of the City Council. I'm Peter Katz, CEO of the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce. And the chamber has consistently voiced its support of intelligent growth in the North Bay Shore region. It directly supports housing, the environment, and community benefits, as well as offices, as these are all essential to health and well-being of our economy and our lifestyle. We've also been, we've also been strong supporters of local engagement, especially by small businesses. For these reasons, we support the 1808 North Shoreline Project and its North Bay Shore Precise Plan Office Bonus FAR Proposal. In particular, we support giving smaller property owners like Jeff Morris, whose family, as you heard, has been here since the 80s, the opportunity to contribute and to participate in the vision for North Bay Shore. We believe the Morris Group's project and their request for a bonus 69,000 square feet of bonus FAR is compelling. You heard the numbers. It provides the construction of 58 units of affordable housing, which the city needs now. Over 9.7 million in funding to the city with 4.7 specifically for community benefits, 2.5 million for transportation. It also provides 4,000 square feet of retail and active use space, and key pedestrian and bike improvements along North Shoreline. As important, the project has been drawn up in consideration of both the design and the standards set forth in both the Precise Plan and the Google Master Plan. The chamber urges City Council to support staff's recommendation to authorize the bonus FAR request from the Morris, for the Morris Group. It will mean more affordable housing and use in accordance to city guidelines, while supporting smaller property owners' active participation in achieving our development vision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is the last call for public comments. Either raise your hand via Zoom, or submit a card, or come up to the microphone. Seeing no other public comments, I'll bring the item back for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Abicoga.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I don't see other hands, I went ahead and, we'll make the motion as well. But I just want to say that I will be supporting this project. I appreciate the hard work that has been put into the project. Thank you, staff, as always. And I appreciate the applicant's work on this as well. I do like the architecture. Hopefully it stays. But given that we are doing the bonus allocation tonight, I'll try to just focus on that. And as Mr. Katz had mentioned, I, I do think it is important to have a diversification of businesses and to be able to support big and small businesses. And so this project, I believe, does both. I, I think that in terms of the housing piece, where, you know, things change over time. For a long time, we had funding and not land. Now we're getting more land, but we don't have as much funding. And so I think that it's important for us to be flexible and to adjust accordingly to what we need at the time. And also recognizing that there is an issue, the difference in terms of sizes of projects and what can, and can, what can be feasible based on size, or even just physically possible. And in light of the precise plan, the way it is. And, and I think we've learned over time, as we've done, the different precise plans, I think we learned something new and, and continue to improve on each precise plan. So that's where it's, I think it's good to review these plans once in a while, and then try to implement what we may have learned earlier. So I think that establishment of guidelines moving forward will be very helpful and, and important to do. So with that, if it's okay to keep the motion, I know there's some other hands, but I will, we continue to keep the motion alive. Thanks.
So I see, so Councilmember Abicoga's made a motion. I see a second by Councilmember Maticek. And I don't see that she wants to make a comment. So, but Councilmember Ramos would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have been actually struggling with this project for a while. So like, item one and three in the recommendations, I'm relatively fine with. But I, it sits with me. I had to, I, I had a recent vote where I had to explain to the community why I supported office space. And it was difficult for me. And I get, we, we set aside this bonus FAR. I actually remember, it was my first council meeting when we did the, I say we, but when the city did their FAR bonus, I was sitting pretty much where RT is, but like on the floor, because there wasn't enough seats, because there was a lot of interest in it. I, I struggle largely because of the staff report saying how much this office space meets the office space goals, but not as much for our housing goals. I got involved for the housing. I got involved to, to ensure that people are housed and we do have a jobs-housing imbalance. And so I struggle with this a lot. I, I really am grateful for my council colleagues for the questions that they have asked. But I still struggle with this project and defending more office space, fully knowing that, are we getting what we want out of this office space, which is literally the currency of North Bay Shore? And that's why I, I struggle. I'm not entirely sure if I feel comfortable supporting the motion. And I feel like I'm an odd one out, unfortunately. But it, it's strange. I, I really do struggle with, with this project and this allocation. I, I asked staff before, when we were having our, our briefing, like, why did, we knew the economic conditions aren't that great right now. Why did we bring it out now? And it was my understanding that the applicant really wanted to. And so there's that feeling of, maybe we should strike iron while it's hot. But if we're not getting the, an equal, it doesn't feel like we're getting an equal amount for the office space we're getting, the equal amount of housing for it. Which is why the item three in the recommendation is really important, so that we can figure out how to do that linkage. But I, I really do struggle with, with supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll say, I also struggle with this one for the exact same reason. That, you know, I, I like the architecture. And, but I, I don't know whether it offers enough of the infrastructure that we need along with the, the office. I, I was though, you know, I was encouraged to hear that we, that it doesn't set a precedent for future applicants. And it's a frankly fairly tiny project. So, so that, that's something that I'm, I'm mulling over as well. And I think that, as you said, the, the third staff recommendation that we need guidelines that really, as much as we can, make sure that each office project is providing the various kinds of infrastructure we need, including housing and affordable housing, that that's, that that's really important. So, Councilmember Kameh?
Thank you. So, thanks to the mayor and Councilmember Ramos. I, I too, I think, have been thinking a lot about the, the proposal. And one of the things that I was trying to ask about in, was could we move forward with authorization and have the flexibility with which applicants are always asking us for, to perhaps discuss the affordable housing contribution or, or component a little bit more, or the infrastructure that's been discussed? I think that it, I felt that the discrepancies in terms of what, or what the city and staff has put forward, and then the applicant's numbers, they were not similar. And so I felt like we had gone forward with the North Bay Shore Precise Plan with these guidelines, with the idea that if we did, we wanted to optimize the flexibility. But yet I see something in the guidelines, and this, this one is the bullet that has gotten me, which I had read earlier, you know, the amount of affordable housing that, that exceeds the requirements listed in the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. And in a way, I feel like the bonus FAR allocation is almost like a gatekeeper. It needs to go above and beyond. And so I really want to see redevelopment in the North Bay Shore, see redevelopment on this parcel. I feel like every iteration of the project has gotten better on the site. And I think they're really trying to work with the overall vision for the area. But I do, I am concerned about meeting the housing that our community has asked us to provide. And so I don't know if this is something that would, we would take a strong motion on, or if it's just something that I could say, we'll move forward with authorization. But as it stands, there's no timeline given. And some of my colleagues are asking about timeline. And I feel concerned about the length with which we might see something come forward. But if we move forward with the authorization, could there be more ongoing discussions on how to meet the needs of our affordable housing in the North Bay Shore? So, I see the city attorney raised her hand, so I'm going to stop talking now.
You don't have to stop. I was just going to address some of your questions and, and see if I could maybe provide council some options if you're struggling with a decision tonight. One, you could continue this item and give staff and the city attorney's office an opportunity to, you know, work with the applicant and to work through a few things to see if we can come up with some additional options for council's consideration. The other thing that you could do is you could direct staff to amend the guidelines and go back out and issue a new request for proposal that provides more clarity on what you are seeking in proportionality, if, if that is, if that is the struggle here this evening. So I just wanted to let you know that you, you have options. But, you know, one, maybe simpler one, might be just to continue this and, and give us a little opportunity to, to work with staff and the applicant to see if we can come back with, with more for you.
And just to clarify, that would require a substitute motion to continue? Is that?
Yes.
So I don't feel prepared to make a substitute motion or to go in that direction, but more to just share with my colleagues the things that I'm thinking about, and just truly trying to dig into the second recommendation and explore, you know, the authorization, you know, if the applicant's hearing some concern about the affordable housing contribution, you know, is that shared with other colleagues? I don't know. So at this point, I don't feel prepared to make anything else, but just wanted to vocalize. Thanks.
Council, Councilmember Abicoga.
Thank you, Mayor. So,
So I appreciate my colleagues' concerns and comments. I do believe though, that there is an issue here of size. And when we have bigger projects, there's more flexibility to frankly offer more. This is a very small project in the big picture of 2.2 million or whatever we allotted. And I think that needs to be taken into consideration. I question why we didn't have other applicants. Part, I wondered if it is because what's left is so minimal and frankly, you know, on a small parcel of two acres, you can't build housing on there too. So we have to be very realistic and I, you know, I understand how much we need housing, but we just, please be mindful that, you know, we do need businesses. We need to diversify our businesses. You know, we're kind, I'm concerned about our becoming dependent on one entity and even that project is starting to change and morph and we're not getting what we were told we were going to get. So I just want to be very mindful of that moving forward, that we continue to create and foster an environment that is conducive to businesses wanting to come here and grow. So in light of that, I think, I believe we should move forward with this tonight. And I will say that as we move forward with the guidelines and the reason why I asked about the, the 2.2 million was that, you know, at that time, however long we, when ago when we did that, we had set that, but given how things are moving, we may have to revisit that too, because I don't know if the 170,000 square feet is really going to be, you know, frankly, that exciting for any other business to want to come in and use that. So this will probably be beyond my time here, but I, I think those are things that we really need to be thinking of. And, you know, I don't want it, us to become cost prohibitive that businesses just aren't going to be interested in coming in. So with that, I think we should just continue and move forward with this motion. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think this is a good project and so I'm going to be supporting it. But of course, this discrepancy with the affordable housing is, is of concern. But as we've talked about, tonight, we're talking about the bonus FAR. There will be additional times for us to talk about components of this project moving forward. So I'm hoping that the developer has heard loud and clear that this council really cares about affordable housing. And I hope that you will work with staff to maximize the amount you can contribute to affordable housing. You are long-term members of the community. You know how important this is. And, you know, for instance, one of the things we talked about when I talked to Carrie a couple of days ago was the possibility of paying the affordable housing fees early. You know, that can be valuable too, as well as, so I hope that you and staff will work together to maximize the value of the affordable housing that, that comes forward for this because it does, it does matter just a huge amount to all of us. Thank you.
So we have one more comment, I think, and then we'll vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I'll be supporting the motion as well. I'll share, I'm also not terribly enthusiastic about office generally. It's not something I campaigned to advance, but I feel like there are some circumstances that help me evaluate the, the project and come to the conclusion that it's worthy of support. And one is the, the bonus FAR program was established to allow the city to capture value in North Bay Shore, right? At the time, office was immensely desirable. And so what the city did appropriately was say, we're going to provide a cap, a limit on the amount of office space. And then essentially, maybe these are strong words, but, but sort of apportion it based on the, the benefit that the city can get in return, right? So there's a quid pro quo, right? You get office space, but in doing so, you must provide something to the city in return. And I, I'm very sensitive to what Councilmember Kamay was, was saying. And I think part of the challenge is we don't have a standard by which we could evaluate projects against each other. At, at the time, in 2014, it may have made sense to do it this way because we were anticipating a lot of applicants who would have to put their best foot forward, right? And so we can pick and choose based on the value that each applicant was, was presenting. When you only have one applicant, the beauty passion process doesn't work anymore. And I think it's in a time like this where it would be really helpful to have an established value, like every other precise plan has, a dollar value per square foot, for instance. And I think the applicant chose a comparable precise plan as a reference point. You know, another way of thinking about it is how much is, is an applicant going before us in a substantially similar period of time proposing on a dollar per square foot value? I'm, I'm comfortable with what you've come up with, but I think that the challenge here is we don't have a, a standard to apply for an appropriate evaluation. But I think what, what you have shared, Councilmember Ramos, is compelling to a point. If we're seeing office to cease to be as valuable as it once was, I think we have to recalibrate our expectations accordingly. And unfortunately, it may mean not getting as much as we had hoped 10 years ago. But what is being provided, I think, is appropriate. It will help us, we're getting a lot of land and land is great, except we don't have enough money to build the housing on that land that we're getting. This is, I think, a, a good start, given the size of the project. So I'm, I'm comfortable with what's being proposed. Thank you.
Okay. Because this has been controversial, I'll let everybody add comments. Councilmember Kamay, did you have another comment?
I just wanted to, to thank my colleagues. I mean, part of this is a public policy discussion and we have it in an open and public meeting. And when I leaned forward, it wasn't to do a substitute motion. It was more to just kind of talk it out with you all as colleagues and to, to discuss maybe the things that, what Vice Mayor brought up in terms of the prepayment. That was not something that was brought up to me in, in my meeting with the applicant's representative. And I think items like that could be things where I don't think in this climate, we're going to see projects that are perfect. I think that that's, you know, we're going to see a lot of imperfect perfect. And so I think it's to, to brainstorm with all of you about some of the things that we, we struggle with as a community. And so I feel comfortable in the direction that we're going with, which is amending our guidelines to provide the clarity that's necessary nearly a decade later after the North Bay Shore precise plan, number one, and to maybe explore the prepayment process as well for the affordable housing or the community benefit contribution. That makes me comfortable to move forward with the authorization. So just want to thank colleagues because I think it's when we brainstorm together that it's helpful.
Ms. Vastova.
Thank you for indulging me. The, the proposal before council is the proposal that was made by the applicant. I would like to give the applicant maybe, and I, a chance to consider what council has talked about, which is maximizing affordable housing or prepayment, because that won't come after, after authorization, because what council is approving is the, is the project before you. So I just wanted to make it clear that if, if council wished to see early payment or more funding, that would have to voluntarily come from the applicant.
So are you saying the applicant should be invited now or?
They should be invited before the council makes the decision on the project because we, we can't make this authorization conditional based on my discussion with the city attorney.
So you're, I want to make sure I'm clear on what you're asking. You're asking the applicant to respond to our request to maximize affordable housing through pay, prepayment or some other means?
I think if I can clarify, I think she's, the applicant should be offered an opportunity to speak again if they wish to speak again. If they don't wish to speak again, then I think that it would be fine.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to speak again, in particular about affordable housing? Or anything else?
Hi, I'm Carrie Williams, representing Jeff Morris. And this was a really helpful discussion and so I appreciate everybody's comments. I mean, it was really, really helpful to hear this. And, you know, we, this is just a bonus FAR authorization. It's not an entitlement to build a project. We still have to come forward with or without a development agreement. We, we have to come forward and be compelling. And so I think we've heard very clearly what, you know, the priorities are and that's really helpful for us. And we, you know, we, we took that to heart and we look forward to bringing back, if you authorize us tonight, a really, really exciting, you know, project you can be excited about, everyone.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Abicoga?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was going to suggest that perhaps that discussion could be incorporated if, when a development agreement is being discussed. So no need to do anything this evening, but I think that's going to be the expectation.
Ms. Logue, did you have a comment or no? You looked like you were going for the button.
No, I was just making sure I understood, but I, I think I understand.
Okay. Okay, great. So we'll be moving towards a vote. I'm going to support the motion. I was on the fence before, but I think various factors, the fact that we've had sort of a debate about how important supplying various kinds of infrastructure, particularly affordable housing and ways of encouraging that further. Also the fact that this is a small project, but it will, I think even, even throughout today, I've, I've felt more and more the need to diversify the businesses that we have in our city. So that's another element, another, another element of my support for this project that I, that I, that was not present when I read the staff report originally. So I will be supporting the motion. I see no other comments, so we can all vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, would council members like a short break? Are you ready to plow on? Okay, I hear. Going on? Okay. The majority wants to go on. Okay. Time will tell. Okay. So we are now on the item 7.1, a public hearing regarding 189 North Bernardo Avenue office project. Would any council members like to make disclosures? I see no council members wishing to make disclosures. So Associate Planner Brittany Whitehall and Assistant Community Development Director Lindsay Hagan will present the item.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Brittany Whitehill and tonight I am joined by Assistant Community Development Director Lindsay Hagan. The item for your consideration this evening is an office development located at 189 North Bernardo Avenue. This project is located on an approximately 3.8 acre site on the southeast corner of North Bernardo Avenue and Central Expressway in the East Wisman Precise Plan Employment Character Area South. The site has a general planned land use designation of high intensity office and surrounding land uses include office and R and D uses to the north and west of the site. To the south and east of the site is Central Expressway, multifamily and mobile home uses and the Caltrain tracks. The site is currently developed with an existing two-story office building, which will remain with this project and surface level parking. In January of 2018, the city and Los Altos School District, or LASD, established a transfer of development rights, TDR program. This project received authorization from city council to utilize up to 28,000 square feet of TDR floor area at that meeting. The applicant hosted a community meeting in January of 2022. Property owners within 750 feet of the project site, as well as the Wagon Wheel Neighborhood Association, were notified about the meeting, however, no members of the public attended. In March of 2022, the project was considered by the EPC at a study session. The EPC expressed support for the project and directed the applicant and staff to study refinements, which focused largely on tree preservation, landscaping and amenity areas. The project was initially reviewed by the DRC in February of 2022 and subsequently received a recommendation of conditional approval in October of 2022. And most recently, in March of 2020, 2023, the project received a unanimous recommendation of approval by the Environmental Planning Commission. During this EPC meeting, the project received one public comment requesting that the proposed exterior lighting be upgraded to comply with Dark Sky International standards. And the applicant has voluntarily agreed to work with staff to implement this where feasible through the building permit process. The project proposes to renovate the existing two-story office building, which is shown in blue on the slide, construct a new four-story office building, shown in gold, and a six-level parking garage with two levels below grade, shown in pale yellow. Access to the site will remain off of North Bernardo Avenue. In addition to the 28,000 square feet of TDR floor area from the LASD TDR program, the project requests to utilize approximately 48,000 square feet of bonus FAR as part of the East Wisman Precise Plan Bonus FAR Program. The new office has been designed to appear as a floating glass building with sweeping curvilinear facades and building canopies with entries incorporating warm accent materials. The building facade incorporates fritted glass for bird safety and is non-reflective to prevent glare. Minor renovations to the existing building are proposed and these focus on entries which will complement the entries of the new office building. The new garage incorporates a printed flex screen facade treatment for the first two levels with vertical fins accenting the top two floors. And as previously noted, the project was reviewed by the DRC and rec, and received a recommendation of approval with design conditions. These conditions focus on enhancing the pedestrian and bicycle improvements and minor refinements to the office and garage designs. 111 trees, including 61 heritage trees, are proposed to be removed to construct the project, primarily due to their conflict with the proposed building footprint, underground garage or multi-use path. Additionally, a small number of shamel ash trees are proposed to be removed due to their condition. The applicant has worked extensively with city staff to develop the optimal site design to achieve tree preservation wherever possible while providing public access envisioned in the East Wisman Precise Plan Complete Streets Network. The replanting plan features 220 new trees, including 46 coast live oaks and 36 valley oaks in key locations throughout the site. The project will result in a net increase in tree canopy at full maturity. And the proposed plant palette provides varied robust landscaping, featuring 85% native plants. In compliance with the East Wisman Precise Plan, the project proposes a multi-use path with bicycle facilities and a north to south pedestrian paseo. Additionally, the project will provide approximately 23,000 square feet of privately owned, publicly accessible open space as required in the East Wisman Precise Plan, which would feature bike fix-it stations, sport and games courts, pedestrian scale lighting, seating and barbecues. As previously noted, the project requests approximately 48,000 square feet of bonus FAR in exchange for a community benefits contribution of approximately $1.3 million. And staff suggests that these funds be allocated to the Bernardo Undercrossing CIP project. Lastly, in exchange for 28,000 square feet of floor area through the LASD TDR program, the applicant has committed approximately $3.6 million to LASD to support their acquisition of a new school site in the San Antonio Precise Plan area. The project substantially complies with the East Wisman Precise Plan Employment Character Area standards and requests minor exceptions to the required number of loading space, loading spaces and to multi-use and north to south paseo standards. These exceptions allow for additional landscaping within the surface parking area and preservation These exceptions allow for additional landscaping within the surface parking area and preservation of nine additional existing heritage trees. The project advances several guiding principles of the Precise Plan, which relate to minimizing vehicle trips, building a complete streets network, and creating a highly sustainable community. The project also complies with the general plan High Intensity Office Land Use Designation standards. An initial study of environmental significance was prepared for the project and concluded that with implementation of city standard conditions of approval and certain mitigation measures from the previous Precise Plan EIR, the project would not result in any new or more significant impacts over those previously identified. In conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council adopt the initial study and approve the planned community permit, development review permit, and heritage tree removal permit as shown in the staff report. City staff is available for questions, and the applicant team is also present and has a brief application, or brief presentation to share.
Yes, thank you. We'll now have a presentation from the applicant, Steve Lynch, Sand Hill Property Company, and Ken Rodriguez, architect for Kenneth Rodriguez and Partners.
Thank you, Council. Good evening. My name is Steve Lynch with Sand Hill Property Company, and we've owned this property since approximately 2017. We do have a short presentation. Ken Rodriguez with Ken Rodriguez and Partners, and Gary Lehman from Gazardo Partners is here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Hicks, members of council, Ken Rodriguez. Good to be back in front of you again with an exciting project moving forward. I want to be very brief because staff's report was very thorough, but if we could go to a couple of the renderings, I wanted to just share some images with, with the council. Let's go to the next slide. Keep going, please. Okay. So this gives an overview of the existing area and our site, which shows the new proposed building in the center of the site there, the parking garage to the left, and then the existing building, which has a current, currently has a lease in it that will run for a ways. But looking at a master plan, we really tried to develop the ability to center the building and then also have the ability to, at some point, either remodel the building, the existing two-story building, or create a new building on the corner. So I wanted to just assure the council that we have some flexibility with both of those. Let's go to the next slide. This shows the existing 189 building. We are doing a remodel to the building, enhancing it with some new exterior skin materials, glass, and a major entry. Let's go to the next slide. This is a view from Central Expressway, and I think, you know, really shows the building can be and will be a really interesting sculptural piece. The materials Brittany mentioned very thoroughly, but I think this, this particular building will have a pedestrian connection to Central Expressway, which will really activate the city's desire for the new trail system along Central. A real positive piece versus an auto-oriented expressway, both auto and pedestrian and bicycle today. Let's go to the next slide if we could. And this just shows a close-up of the, the two buildings, the connector that will connect that multi-use path with adjacent sites. You can see it right in the middle there with the textured pavement and, and enhancement of landscaping. And as staff mentioned, we are asking for an exception to remove, remove just five loading spaces in front for more additional landscaping, which was suggested by the EPC. So I think that concludes my presentation. We have more slides. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you, or Gary Lehman, or the ownership team. Thank you.
And so I'll only, actually, can we see, they have one more slide showing our total community benefits. But I don't have a whole lot to add to that. We've read staff's reports. Fantastic. We agree with all the recommendations and conditions in the report, and happy to answer any questions you may have. I think it might have been the last one, Brittany, if it's still there. If not, that's okay. It's not a critical bit of information, so. Thanks. I did just want to highlight that, so, because it's taken a while to get to this point, agreeing on community benefits, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do any members of the council have questions? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was wondering if you, you know, you, one of the things, the exceptions you've asked for is, is five loading spaces. And I know that you're going to do regular transportation evaluations as to how this works. So if you find over time that, that five isn't enough, will, will you be able to convert some of the landscaping to another space, or, or, I know I've been in parking lots before where that was done, and it seems it's way better to have it as landscaping, if you possibly can, but if you find out it doesn't work, is that a possibility there?
It sure is. I mean, we, we can also convert standard spaces to loading where, where needed. That's a fairly easy operational piece. Part of the reason we are short on spaces is we walk the site with the city arborists, literally looking at every tree, sort of making sure that we're saving the trees that are healthy, because there are quite a few trees that are being removed for this development. So that's sort of how we backed into those spaces, just sort of at this point, looking at trees, having a little more importance on that side of the project. We certainly can. We can go back and remove more trees if need to. We can put some in the landscaping. We do have some areas up front. I'd be pretty cautious about recommending that, because I think the landscaping on this project's actually landed in a pretty good spot.
No, no, I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying that as part of, as part of the TDM plan.
We sure can, yeah.
Things like that are possible. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the other question I had was, I understand that the increase, there will be an increase in canopy at maturity. What, what will the canopy be at maturity? What do you expect it to be? And how, how much better is that than the current situation?
I can look that up momentarily.
Sure, that's fine. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Madichak.
Thank you. I apologize when you ask about disclosures. I did not meet with the applicant, but I did visit the site on my own this past weekend. I had a question about the Dark Sky principles, and while I appreciate that the applicant would work with staff on implementing those, is it possible to, you know, I also heard where feasible? Like, what would not be feasible?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. This is Assistant Community Development Director Lindsay Hagan. So I think because the city hasn't really dived into the detailed process of really looking at Dark Sky regulations and all the kind of nuances to it, we use the terminology where feasible simply because we don't know all the details until we kind of get through it. And I think during the, as mentioned by, by Planner Whitehill, I think, once we get to the building permit phase, is really when we'd have a lot of those details of what, you know, we can dive into the sign, excuse me, the lighting standards, and looking at the types of lighting that contribute towards, you know, meeting the requirements of, of Dark Sky. And there are other resources we can rely on in looking at that. It's just that we were being cautious, as we haven't really dove deep into that as far as city staff and city regulations.
Okay. And I just want to check with our city attorney. Is it possible to make that a condition rather than an offer to work with staff?
Yeah, I think it would be okay if, if the applicant was agreeable to add that as a condition, that they commit to working with staff as to, as opposed to, you know, the more looser voluntarily. I think that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I guess my other, my other things to say or comments, so I'll hold off. Thanks.
I do have those canopy coverage numbers. So the existing canopy coverage is 32.1%, and at maturity, the estimated canopy coverage would be 39.7%.
Thank you, and that's, and that's good, because it's a big building. So that, thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Ramos.
Just a quick follow-up to the canopy coverage. So at maturity, 39.7%, how long till maturity?
Maturity was estimated at 15 years.
So I'll ask a, oh, Councilmember Ramos, did you have more? Okay. I'll ask a couple of questions. First, the really easy one, I realize I don't understand bike parking stalls. It said there would be 80 bike parking stalls. Is that 80 space to park 80 bikes? Or is it 80 racks for multiple bikes? Exactly how, what does that mean?
Yeah, so that's bike parking to accommodate 80 bikes.
80 bikes, okay. And then my probably maybe more difficult question. I liked a lot of the popes spaces and the uses. I didn't memorize them, but they sounded exciting. I'm wondering, though, because we've had this situation with other entities we've worked with, that there, there is open space, and then there are security concerns, and that space gets cordoned off from public use. So I'm wondering, and, and I actually talked to a planner a week or two ago on another project about this, and she said there'd been a security review so that hopefully that wouldn't happen. I was wondering whether you had gone over that with the applicant, you know, something to make sure that the popes are not fenced off in the future.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So as part of the conditions of approval, there's a requirement to record a public access covenant, where we would outline sort of what can and can't happen. So future, any consideration of a future fencing would be something that we'd have to review and look at as part of a future improvement, if that's what they were offering. But I think as part of this project, the discussions with the applicant have been talking about it being an open and accessible and not secured space for all these different, the three main areas that were highlighted.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick follow-up to that. So does that mean we could count these popes spaces towards our three acres per 1,000 people obligation?
Another great question. Unfortunately, based on how our current regulations are written, it's only subject for residential development, so it wouldn't be able to count formally towards the city's parkland requirements. But I think hopefully we can all agree, it's still a great benefit.
That's a strange distinction that we make. Thank you.
Okay, this is the last call for questions from council members. Seeing no more. Would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom, or submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk. I'll take in-person speakers first, and, okay. And each speaker, not seeing a tremendous number of speakers, each speaker will have three minutes. Alex Brown.
A five or six again? Oh, A five or six, the renderings with the... For the audience at home, I'm waiting for the slide to be brought up. Hi, guys. How you feeling? Yeah? Hmm? Okay. So same as usual? Yeah. Love that you're able to keep all the trees. Very nice. And then this, in the middle of all the trees and open space? Yuck. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So I do not see any other public speakers. So we, yes, no more public speakers. So I'll now bring the item back for council deliberation and action.
I just wanted to point out Bruce England has his hand raised.
Oh, does he? He does, and he's way down the list. Okay. Usually the hands rise to the top. Okay, Bruce England.
Thank you, Mayor. Bruce England here. I will call you tomorrow, Madam Mayor. So a few comments on this project. So Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive. I manage three local groups, Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning, Green Spaces Mountain View, and the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, Mountain View Local Team. We talk a lot about this project and the undercrossing at Bernardo, a shared project between Mountain View and Sunnyvale. And one thing that we've been bringing up all along, but doesn't seem to show up in the reports, is inclusion of public-facing restrooms and water fountains at the location, partly in the interest of serving those who are using the undercrossing. So there's, that's going to be a commuter path between parts of Sunnyvale, Mountain View, and the north part. There was interest expressed in at least exploring that early on, but it seems to have dropped off, and I'd sure like to hear a commitment to either doing it or saying, no way we're going to do that. The Dark Sky issue, there's a lot of good advice from organizations like the International Dark Sky Association, and Google, and Lend Lease, and the School District, Mountain View, Wisman School District have already committed to applying those standards to their lighting policies. So it seems to me that that's set a precedent that the developer can take advantage of. Lastly, hate to see a loss of so many trees. It's great to see there'll be an increase in canopy, but it's, I'll just say, it's hard to take the idea that we have to cut down a whole lot of trees in order to realize an increase in canopy and with native trees. So try to take the good with the bad, I guess, but it's partly discouraging. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, now I took a careful look, and I do not see any more hands raised virtually. So we'll bring the item back for, we'll bring the item back for council deliberation and action, and note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the resolution attached to the report. Ellen? Councilmember Kamai. Oh, no. Okay. So, Councilmember Madichak.
Thank you. So I said I had some comments before. I live within the boundaries of the Wagon Wheel Neighborhood Association, and so I checked my email to see if I had any notices from a year ago, and I didn't. And I contacted the board members, and they all searched their email, and they didn't have any notices. So clearly, something went wrong. The Wagon Wheel Neighborhood Association, as far as we can tell, didn't get notified. So sorry, nobody showed up for the meeting. We weren't notified. So I think we need to go back and figure out what happened, what went awry, so that that doesn't happen again, because that neighborhood is very interested in what's going on in the area. Let's see. I, I was glad to see that staff is going to work with the applicant on the design. I personally feel like it is too much glass, and it doesn't fit well, even though they might redo other buildings. And, you know, we saw a building earlier today that seemed warmer and more inviting from my perspective than one that is pretty much all glass. So I appreciate that staff is going to work with them on changing some things, and I'm hoping that can be at least some warmer elements, so it's not just all glass. Let's see. I mentioned that I would like to make it a condition of approval to follow the Dark Sky lighting regulations or policies, and I'm hoping that the maker of the motion in the secondary will include that. And I will say, I appreciate the public art, but I, I would like to see something, and I can't figure out a way of describing this, other than, something other than twisted There are lots of examples of public art. I take pictures every place I go. I send a lot to the city manager. I send a lot to the city manager as ideas of what we could have in Mountain View. And it's things like, you know, people and objects you recognize. You know, I saw one recently that, you know, was a stack of books, very large books. Things that, you know, are objects that people will recognize as opposed to... What is that? You know, there's one, and I think it is Denver, that's a big blue bear looking into a building. That's creative. I'd like to see something creative for the art that's at this location. And I'm happy to send the applicant lots of ideas, if they're looking for some. But that one's really important to me, that it's something other than twisted metal. And I'd also like to stay away from birds, because we have so many... Sorry to be so detailed, but this is my only opportunity. We have so many birds as public art throughout the city. We need something different. We need some diversity in our public art. But let's see. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Matt... Oh, you were Councilmember Mataschek. Councilmember Kameh.
Great, thanks. Yes, I'm happy to include dark skies into the motion. However, we should add that. I'll look to the city attorney for that. And I'm making the motion. I do know that it's gone through quite a few iterations of design with staff and feel like it's getting closer in the right direction. I echo Councilmember Mataschek's call to expanding the radius of notification. Not only do I feel like it's Wagon Wheel, but Wisman Station, East Wisman. It's really right there, so I'm really hopeful. Or, as we heard, the Mountain View Sustainable Planning Coalition. Mr. England lives right there on Wisman Station Drive. So hopefully, we can expand the radius when we know that it's going to be near other office parks. And then excited that I believe this will... This is part of the LASD Transfer Development Rights. And so excited to kind of be moving forward with that. And I feel like, Councilmember Mataschek, we need to trademark plop art, as your coined phrase. Really appreciate that you're always looking out for that. One thing I wanted to highlight for council that I don't know that we've looked at yet is this is part of the Bernardo Avenue Undercrossing, which we just looked at at Council Transportation Committee. And it's an exciting opportunity to connect Bernardo and Evelyn over to this side. And we have been looking at and exploring, I think, feedback on the design of that crossing, as well as the public art that could be in that space. And so perhaps as that's going forward, there could maybe be some understanding of what that public art in the undercrossing might be, or the color scheme. That would be nice. I think it'd be a nice experience as a, you know, scooter, bicyclist, walker, to be able to see. And so just wanted to highlight that. And for those reasons, I've made the motion. So I don't know if other colleagues have comments, but let me know when I need to read the motion or if I need to include anything about dark skies into the reading of the recommendation. Thank you.
So does the city attorney have any comments on what should be included in the reading?
I think if you just accept, you know, the friendly amendment and then go ahead and read it, that's fine. Unless, city clerk, do you need clarity on what the... Okay.
Okay, so I see a motion by Councilmember Kameh, a second by Councilmember Ramirez. I see no additional comments. Oh, you're... Oh, you're back in the queue. Okay. I thought that you hadn't removed yourself. Okay.
No, I just wanted to clarify. It was the Visual Arts Committee who used the term "plop art", but I loved it, so I use it a lot. I don't want to take credit for it. Thank you.
Okay. Now, not to skip anyone, are there any other comments? I don't see any, so the motion.
Yes, to adopt the initial study of environmental significance for the 189 North Bernardo Avenue Office Project and determine that the project is consistent with the East Wisman Precise Plan, Final Environmental Impact Report, and Mountain View 2030 General Plan and Greenhouse Gas Reduction Program Final Environmental Impact Report pursuant to Sections 15162 and 15183 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines at 189 North Bernardo Avenue, Attachment 1 to the council report. Two, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View approving a planned community permit and development review permit to construct a four-story, 856 square-foot office building, a parking structure with four levels above grade and two levels below, and minor building modifications to existing two-story office building to remain on-site. A transfer of development rights of 28,000 square feet from 2535 California Street, 506 Showers Drive, and 350 Showers Drive to the project site in relation to the Los Altos School District TDR program, and a heritage tree removal permit to remove 61 heritage trees on a 3.8-acre site located at 189 North Bernardo Avenue. To be read in title only. Further reading waived, attachment to the council report.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we can all vote.
Can I just clarify? So that does include they will implement dark skies?
Yes, and the friendly amendment from Councilmember Mataschek.
Okay, thank you.
Passes unanimously. We'll now move to item eight on our agenda, which is council staff committee reports. Councilmember Abicoga.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that the city's Association Selection Committee chose members for the Recycling Waste Reduction Committee and the Emergency Operations Council. And we also had a board meeting where we had... We have guest speakers who were coming in. And we had two from the county. One was from the Gun Violence Prevention Task Force, and they did a great presentation that focused on something that has come up in our city, the Gun Violence Restraining Order. And the task force is encouraging all cities to adopt those types of policies as part of a way to promote gun safety. And the other presentation was on the Healthy Cities Dashboard. So we've had this in the past. I think it was put on hold during COVID. But there's like a list of different items, and they will rate each city on each item. And one actually is on gun violence, and another one was on sustainability. And they're planning for a summit later in the fall focused on these two items. So I can't remember, but I think Mountain View, we were doing pretty well. There's some areas that we could focus on. I think one, actually, the vaping issue is on there, too. But overall, I think we're in a good place. I also wanted to remind folks that on June 15, Thursday, we will have the city's association annual membership dinner. And this is with partnership with Silicon Valley Clean Energy and the joint venture Silicon Valley, focuses on sustainability, clean energy. We will be having cooking demonstrations using induction cooking techniques, and then dinner, and some speakers, and then a dessert food truck. So, and it'll be at the Los Altos Community Center. It's actually free of charge. We receive sponsorship from SBCE. So please, I encourage all of you to sign up and join us that evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to share that I attended the Leadership Mountain View Sustainability Day on Friday. Gave a little talk on sea level rise and recycled water and went to their graduation. Several people went to graduation. It was great fun, and I think that we're going to have another great group of leaders coming forward to help us in all sorts of civic activities. And I also wanted to share that this morning, the mayor and myself and Raymond spent the morning at the South Bay Salt Pond Program Stakeholder Meeting. They have one about every year to sort of bring everybody up to speed. And I put together some slides about it, but... Anyway, it's not too late. Should I go through them now or just share them with everybody? I'll just share them with everybody later. But anyway, put through a couple... There were like 115 slides in this slideshow. So I kind of knew you didn't want to share... You didn't want me to share that. So I took out... I took out about, I don't know, six or seven.
Oh, to show us, as opposed to...
To show you, to show you, yeah. Yeah, I thought that would, you know, you might actually look at that. So we will share that tomorrow. But the, you know, the real take-home message, I think, is that at the end of Phase 2, which is what our, the restoration in Mountain View is part of, we, the program will have reached the 50-50 goal of having 50% of the marshes in the South Bay restored. I mean, 50% of the salt ponds restored to marsh, and 50% of them will be still ponds. And when, you know, when the salt pond project started, that was the, the idea was that we would get at least a 50%. And then depending on how things were in terms of sea level rise, and particularly in terms of how the birds and, you know, the endangered species were responding, we may someday go to as high as 90% restoration. So we are, you know, on a trajectory to that. And they also showed about, I think it was about a $3.6 million gap in finishing the restoration in the Mountain View area. And we have heard about that from other, you know, we've heard about that from the city directly. So just wanted to share that, and you'll be seeing this great slideshow.
Thank you. Councilmember Mataschek.
Thank you. So we had a council transportation committee meeting on May 15, and there will be two projects coming forward to council. A road diet on Miramonte between Castro and Cuesta, and the El Monte Corridor Road Diet between, and there's two intersections, Escola and, on El Camino. So El Monte and El Camino, and Escola and El Camino. Where they go together, and it goes up to the Mountain View border at Springer. So that'll be coming forward to the council. And then I participated in a BOSCA, Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, board meeting on May 18. And as a reminder, I feel like I say this every time, but in case somebody doesn't know, this is the 26 agencies that buy water from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission that is the owner of the Hetch-Echey system. And actually, the SFPUC had a celebration at the Ochanesi Dam, which is the dam that created the Hetch-Echey reservoir. It is 100 years old, which is kind of surprising. When I was first appointed to BOSCA, they took us, all the new board members, up to... We toured different segments of the system and then ended up at the Hetch-Echey water, I'm sorry, reservoir. And we had an opportunity to go into the Ochanesi Dam, which was really pretty interesting, I must say. And, but getting to our water supply situation, you heard a little bit about it from Vice Mayor Joe Walter earlier, but looking at just the Hetch-Echey system, they are expecting the system to be filled by July 1. You know, they have to... There's a gentleman who just loves math, and we met him on our tour. And he does all the calculations on the snowpack and how it's going to melt, and therefore, how much space you have to have in the system at the different points. And so there is space in the reservoir to hold the snow melt, but they're expecting it to fill by July 1. And water consumption, we look at that at every meeting. And it's kind of shocking that our, as a system, the consumption is below the 2015 levels. Even though the population has grown quite a bit, the per capita usage of water is really depressed, so to speak, which is great news in general. It's great news. And let's see, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kameh.
As Councilmember Mataschek mentioned, we had a council transportation committee meeting on the 15th. And on the 16th, we had a council youth services committee meeting. So I'll highlight that, which is we had the largest amount of participants of our youth in the teen art showcase, which was in the Rotunda area, with 68 participants. And so they had a really successful teen week. And so I've asked staff to share that in our council connection, so we can see who the teen-friendly businesses were and all the other events that took place for our youth. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you have more comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot to tell you all about the council neighborhood committee meeting. We had the first in-person one in three years, and I really think it was a great success, both because the staff members, you know, I don't think they get that many opportunities to talk to people who aren't in their departments. And since they're people from, you know, each department there, they, you know, they spend three or four hours at that meeting together, and particularly before and after the meeting. They get to talk to folks that aren't in it. So there were, people really seemed to enjoy that. And we had a fairly robust group of people in the audience. I think there were about 40 members of the audience. And they just kept the questions coming. They were primarily about transportation. So Lorenzo Lopez got the prize for the most questions answered. And anyway, I think that everyone was just very, really pleased to be back together face-to-face. It's, you know, it's, this is something that the city of Mountain View does that's pretty unique. And when, you know, when the members of the community have an opportunity in a less formal setting to come up and talk to individuals from the departments with their questions, it's really much less intimidating. And, you know, I think it's really appreciated. So I just wanted to share that we had that and thank all the staff who took part. There were, I think there were probably 25 staff members there.
Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Councilmember Kameh and Vice Mayor Joe Walter. I was also in the council youth services committee and the CNC. It was wonderful. It was my first time as a committee member in either of those. Thank you so much for this opportunity. It was great. Thank you.
So I'll just, seeing no other commenters, I'll just add that I, I guess it was Monday, I greeted Vice President Kamala Harris along with Mayor Gilmore from Santa Clara and Mayor Klein from Sunnyvale on the tarmac, which was fun because she's from my hometown, Berkeley. And I think there were other council members in the welcoming group as well, Councilmember Kameh and Abicoga. And she was here in... Then we went off to Sunnyvale for a presentation. She was here to talk about the Federal Chips Act, which was inspired in part, passed in Washington in part because, for national security reasons, because of the supply chain issues some time ago, where there were not enough, not enough chips available to get to manufacturers some of the things people wanted to purchase and in order that that not be a problem in the future. Also, she was there to announce in Sunnyvale at the Applied Materials Location the world's largest semiconductor R&amp;D facility. So sort of underlining some of the discussion that we've had about what's the future of jobs and offices in the area. You know, it was a little, added a little more food for... You know, it was a little, added a little more food for thought on that subject. And with that, I see no additional comments. So we will move to item nine, the closed session report. City Attorney Logue, do you have a closed session report?
Yes, I do. Thank you. This is City Attorney Jennifer Logue. In closed session this evening, city council took final action on item 2.1 on the closed session agenda, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim filed by Ella Kobzanitz against the city of Mountain View. Ms. Kobzanitz's claim sought $703,796 in damages for injuries she sustained as a result of a trip and fall accident on West Dana Street in Mountain View. Council voted with seven ayes, zero nos, and zero abstentions to deny the claim. In closed session this evening, city council also took final action on item 2.2 on the closed session agenda, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim filed by Elizabeth Ruff against the city of Mountain View. Ms. Ruff's claim sought $10 million in damages for injuries she sustained during a surgery performed at El Camino Hospital. Council voted with seven ayes, zero nos, and zero abstentions to deny the claim. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on item 10, which is adjournment, and the city council meeting is adjourned at 9:43 PM. Our next meeting will be held on June 13 of 2023.